Kelly.
Present.
Oh.
Yes.
Stamat.
Present.
Ms. Paul Steeney, yeah. Ms. Robinson.
Present.
All right, let's rise to the bench.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do not have any signers.
Fantastic. All right. Well, that's a long agenda. No, I'm kidding. All right, so you'll have the meeting minutes from November 18, 2021 in front of you. Please review them for any additional solutions and/or corrections. If there are no corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, but if there are corrections to be made, we can call those as well. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Clark, can you call roll please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Nicole.
Hi.
Stamat.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Steeney.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Motion, yes, six zero.
Okay, tonight we have something that hasn't happened in a very long time. We have two police officers being sworn in on the same night. Well, we are going to be squaring in a full-time police officer that will bring our count up to 13 full-time officers for the first time in a very long time.
Yes.
And for the first time since I've been around, maybe in our history, I don't know, is this true?
No, we've had, we've fluctuated.
We've had part-timers before?
No, not part-timers. Because they're done several years.
Okay, so this is the first time in a very long time that we've ever appointed a part-time officer. So the reason that we brought the part-time officer on was because we have a lot of overtime and burnout and that kind of stuff in the department. So one of the steps the chief has taken to try to alleviate the strain on our officers with somebody that's out sick or there's other time constraints and they need to backfill. So this should allow us to, one, budgetarily lower some of the overtime costs and more importantly, increase them around because the guys aren't going to be sworn in. But I think that's a big step and I think the chief, I thank the chief and I thank Jay Hedges for working together on this. This is a big step. Okay, so with that, I will welcome up Sandro Palam, Palamis? Sorry, did I say it right?
Palamaris, close enough.
Palamaris.
Thank you.
All right, I called it good.
All right, sir, you're fine. Absolutely, you're fine.
Mr. Randy, I do solemn swear.
I do solemn swear.
Constitution of the states.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Discharge of duties.
And I will freely discharge of duties.
Police officer.
As a police officer.
Of the village of Hampshire, Illinois.
Of the village of Hampshire, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, now you can shake everybody else's hands, but then you have to introduce who you brought with you.
Sure.
And tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. Well, thank you again for the opportunity. You guys will not be disappointed. Again, I'd just like to thank my wife for being here, my wife Christina. My son Dominic is there. Prior to starting, I'd like to thank God and my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for giving me this opportunity to be here with you guys today. I've been working as an officer in another jurisdiction. I have 15 years of experience. I came from Wheeling and I also did some part-time work with this gentleman over there, Josh, in the village of Holiday Hills. So I have a little bit of experience and I'm planning to apply that here. And again, I'd like to thank the residents and the residents and most importantly, you guys as well for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, roll, sir.
Thank you.
So do you guys want to take pictures now or do you want to do that after we square in the next officer? Or do you guys want to do it because we have a lot of our officers?
Why don't you go ahead and get the next one to give me after.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just remind you, we need a motion on the part-time. The agenda, you'll see them.
All right, so with that, I will need the motion to approve the appointment of Gil Humero, right?
Peralmo.
Peralmo, I'm sorry, as a part-time police officer.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Roll couple, please, Ms. Clark.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Steeney.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
So we don't need, do we need to square him in or just?
Yes, now you may square him in.
All right.
And just let me remind the board that part-time police officers by statute require.
All right, come on up now that we've done all paperwork.
I do solemn swear.
I do solemn swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will freely discharge.
And will freely discharge.
Duties of a police officer.
Duties of a police officer in the village. Of Hampshire, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome to shake everybody else's hand, but then you have to take your acceptance speech. So you've got to tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're up with.
I brought my mom, Ann, and my friend, Joe DeVito, lives in the next town over on Huntley. Been friends with Josh Marshall, worked with him at Island Lake.
That's like Illuminati.
Yeah. So, right. So I've been a police officer since 1994. I started out in the reserves and I've worked in several communities, mainly in Cook County. I did work at Island Lake Police with Josh. I was out there for quite a while. And done a lot of training, hoping to bring a lot of that training experience here to Hampshire. So other than that, I'm grateful to be here. And I want to thank the chief for taking the time and the lieutenant to meet with me, to talk to me right after Labor Day. And my wife is at work, she's a nurse, she's been coming for 10 months of work. So you know how busy it is, so.
I appreciate you coming.
So we should get a picture of all of you guys.
Yeah.
Morning, guys. Toby. That's the parent.
It's the wall that's out over here. Just want to make sure we have it right. Oh, listen there.
Mr. Mayor, I'm waiting for you. I haven't seen that one. I put it on as soon as I got on the.
Right? You're something, but after you guys, you guys come to it.
Sergeant, Sergeant, you're not immune to this, come on.
I don't know. I got out.
That's all you guys.
You guys need to take over the whole room. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, come on, no.
No, you should be at the.
I guess, I'll stand on the end.
He handed them the badge. So.
Looked like a.
Fast up.
Just for the photo.
You want to get a few more? Put a great picture. Excellent.
Nobody's trying to rob our.
That's true. It's going to feel. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Juice Kay.
I would give the.
So talking, I guess.
Nice to meet you people. See you later.
Okay.
Talk to you soon. It was nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Guys look pretty lovely.
All right, Mr. Hedges.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you, in order to hear tolerance, I would appreciate if we could agenda item up. I did not realize that Dan and Lisa Schneppen would be here tonight and are with us. They have a petition on the management report, nine eight. Rather than having us sit here all night, maybe tonight, I don't think we can do that. The next thing on the agenda is which week, item nine. Or ordinance approving the petition for variations filed by William Investment Group for their property at 268 Mill Avenue.
I will, I will entertain a motion to move nine eight up to seven. So move. Do I need roll bubble? Okay, roll bubble, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Steeney.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Hedges, you're up.
Actually, I think you have before you details on my commission. We also have materials that you can get a supplement with the details. There are three variances requested here. If you would like, Schuster can go through the specifics of the three variances. We did receive the vote that the Planning and Zoning Commission voted three to two. Three positive, two negative, that requires a majority of four. So this three to two vote is a failed vote of three to two on all three motions. They are three separate. They were once, one motion at Planning and Zoning Commission, you could divide them into separate motions if you do so. And the petitioner may want to address those three separate items. Schuster, something you'd like to add?
No, I don't think, that's a good summary. I'm not sure what questions the board members might have or what further details you might wish to talk about in regards to this petition.
I'd like to get a walk through the three. So I think, I think a 30,000-foot overview would be good if you mean.
Okay, so this is property at the end of Mill Street. It's on the north side and it way at the end by the wastewater treatment facility property. Mr. and Mrs. Snapman, through this company, William Investment Group, have acquired the property. I was told that they have made some effort to clean up that property since they've acquired it. There's now the old brick building that was long been there. There's a trailer on the west boundary line. And the, to the north, the additional trailers and other parked vehicles that you see there are not on their property, that's someone else's. So it goes back just about that far. Their plan is to put a pole barn type building in the northeast corner of the property and they'd like to put it right back all the way into the corner up to five feet away from the north and the east property lines. In the public hearing, Mr. Snapman pointed out that that building to the east of his property is in fact right on the property line of that property. There was discussion at the meetings about whether or not they could make the building somewhat compatible with the color and style of the existing brick building. But there were no details presented about that and that's why the light construction rules for accessory buildings is the third type of variance that they were seeking. That they would, the building they would put up would not be made be generally compatible with that existing brick building. So after discussion, a motion was made to approve. There were three positive votes and two negative votes, but for any action required by your Planning and Zoning Commission statute by your ordinance, there must be four concurring votes. So the matter did not effectively get approval for recommendation. There is no special vote required of this board upon receipt of that type of recommendation. We can just point that out. Mr. Maroc apologizes, he's not able to be here tonight to also discuss with you the actions of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Another engagement to see.
So thanks for that. So, so the two, the three variances that are on the table are variation of the rear yard setback that's 20 foot, not less than five foot, that's one variance. Second variance would be the side yard setback is a 20 foot, but not less than five.
Correct.
And the third is the not light construction standard. That's what we have to make a decision on tonight. Now, I think, my thought would be to break that out into three separate votes. Okay, now, I did speak with Chairman Maroc tonight. Or the, see, somebody's got to put money in the jar. All right, so, goodbye drinks later. All right, so, so anyway, so I just speak with Chairman Maroc, okay? And he kind of, and he went through what Mr. Schuster went through, the 30,000-foot overview. He, but I also contacted a representative of that board that voted yes and a representative of that board that voted no. To try to understand the methodology as to why things were the way they were. So there's two schools of thoughts. One is that, that the property owner has made a conscious effort to clean up the property and this would add to the, you know, that same end cleaning up. And that area of town is, is a mess anyway. Okay, as far as zoning and variances and all that kind of stuff. The other side of that argument is that, I mean, we have building, we have zoning codes and regulations for a reason, right? And every time that somebody has, and don't, don't take this one. But every, every time somebody has an issue with it, the code is presented. We've had this discussion over the years, they can apply for a variance. One of the biggest things I can remember is every time that there's a truck stop built, they came to us for signed regulation changes because our code was updated, you know? So when you have multiple people. You're correct, and so we as a board recognized that that was something that everybody was continually asking, so we updated the code. So the, the, the biggest gap, I guess, in the yes and no was because there's people at the school thought that this is what the code is, right? And it shouldn't be buried upon. And then there's other, there's the other side of it where, where is that they've taken good care of the property as it is, they've made an effort, this will this will contribute to the, to the, to the area. My, my thought process, and of course this is up for discussion, I think we should vote on them individually because I don't, that's because of that area being the way that it is, I mean, we do. I don't necessarily know how I feel about one, the, the, the building being that close to the setback or within the five feet, that's, I'm, I'm, you know, I'll ultimately go with what the board decides, but I, I kind of have an issue with the not light construction. The what, the not light construction part of it. And only for the fact that we focused as a board now for the last several years of trying to bring a certain look and a certain standard to the village. And I understand and appreciate what you're doing and I'm not saying that a pole barn is going to look terrible. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying that we've made such a conscious effort in trying to bring a certain look to things and then to approve something just on the basis of it's going to make it look nicer, but with no type of, for lack of a terminology, proof of what it's going to be. I, you know, it's kind of like that same conversation we had the last, the last variance that came in front of this board. At the zoning board meeting, the reason that they voted down the last one for that garage was because there wasn't sufficient evidence to approve what it was based on concept, right? They wanted some meat and potatoes behind it. And so when we brought to this board, the property owner brought evidence and diagrams and showed elevations as to what it was going to look like, which is why we overturned their decision as a board.
No, they, they.
No, no. No, because they changed, they, they remember the height was the issue because they, they voted no.
Denied it.
They denied it because there was no, there was no drawings or any of that.
Okay, you're right.
So they approved, they approved the square plot on a map based on where it was going to be. They didn't approve any type of elevation because they didn't know what it was going to be. So that's why I, I think it warrants more discussion. I don't know if other people feel the same way. But I, I personally feel that we should break it up and those are the reasons why. Open it up for discussion.
What would the light construction look like?
So that was brought up at the planning and zoning meeting and I don't want to speak for them, but one of the things they brought up was the front, the front of the building. Pole barn is traditionally aluminum siding, like, you know, the rivet siding look that goes straight down. Right next to that brick building, it would be nice if they incorporated some brick base shot on the front of it to make it look similar, just to maintain that cohesive look. And so they, they weren't suggesting that instead of putting up an aluminum building, they would put up an entire brick building, you know? But they would just try to maintain that look. And I realized, and I realized that when you drive down Mill Street, it's a, it's a hodgepodge, right? But that's, we can't, we can't change what's already there, but we, we could have impact on what's going.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just point out one thing and then defer to Mr. Schuster to point out one more. When it comes to the light instruction, we, that same rule applies to sheds, which are also accessory buildings, residential areas. So what we, how we've interpreted that in the past, if you have a brick house, if you have a shed that's a similar color that at least complements the house and it's not a big contrast. So we don't ask people to have a brick shed because they have a brick house or have exactly the same site just so that it's not, we need some architectural standards, let's say. So that's been the standard that we use for, for sheds and could be used in the same case. I'll also point out that we've been using the word pole barn and pole barns are not by code permitted in the village. That is not part of this variance. That's just a method of construction, it's not how it looks. You will have to have a real foundation, not just a.
Right, right, correct.
So we describe it as, it's really, I guess the term is these days is butler buildings really. To steal it as a brand.
Yeah.
The type of construction is not, it has to be on a foundation, not just poles sitting on, on.
Right.
Right.
And that's just a method of construction.
Right.
And that's not what you're requesting. You, you build.
We would have a foundation, yes.
Correct.
So I just want to use the proper terms.
I apologize, I was not writing like a morton building or that kind of thing, but like we were looking at for the Public Works Building.
Correct.
When I, when I look at the aerial view of Mill Avenue and all the businesses up and down Mill Avenue, there is no cohesion of light building.
I, I agree with that.
And when I look at the property itself and I look at the plot and then I try to measure it based on what I see from the satellite view of that property and where, it's the northeast corner or northwest corner, sorry.
Where we're trying to tuck it.
It's going to go in the northeast corner.
So back behind where like all these semi-trailers.
Right, it would be tucked back into there, right? Because the, the, the brick building is right in the center and then we have like a U-shaped lot. So if you come out 20 feet each way.
You're kind of.
You're kind of putting it in the middle of the side of the.
So it's, well, but I mean, besides the offset, it looks like the front building is going to be blocking for the majority of this rear building anyway.
No.
No.
It would be in white view.
It would be.
No, it'd be tucked, tucked back.
To the side. Yeah, yeah.
So is it going where all of these trailers are? I don't know if trailers are still there.
No, the trailers are gone.
Trailers are, are, are removed. There are trailers behind right now that's on someone else's property.
That's on 218.
Yeah.
Kind of grassy area.
Uh, it's, it's, well, I don't think anything's grassy back there, but.
There's like a road.
Can you project?
Yeah. We put it up on the screen so that we all know.
Entranceway off of the street there.
Click.
Right. This property, this property is all south of that.
Okay.
So there is a line of trailers. If you went over there tonight, you'd see a line of trailers all across the north, but that's on other property.
Right.
I wasn't saying that was theirs, I'm just trying to figure out where on this property.
It would be.
There's like a steel building? Yeah.
Northeast corner.
What color did they glue?
Oh, and that, so we put that when we were just doing it, but now we understand we do it to match the brick color like a.
Yeah, like more of a sand or a tone to match the existing buildings, you know?
So if you look for, all these trailers are gone on the side here and basically.
Yes.
Three or four trailers right.
That's where it would be, yeah.
Where the building would be.
Right.
And you can see the neighbor's building right on the line.
The neighbor's building is the same type of construction or is it a?
That's a pole barn.
It's a steel pole barn, yeah.
I think 95% of the pole barns back there.
Not pole barns.
At least if they're used in terminology, I didn't offend them.
No, you did not.
Yeah.
Now, okay, so the, the question that I have with, with this is this, if you look at all of the built, not all, but most of the businesses in this area down Mill Street, they don't conform to any 20-foot setbacks at all.
Now, their neighbors built on the lot line.
That's what I'm saying, so, so what do we need to do to change that for a specific area? And it doesn't make any sense because our code, we've had these discussions, right? Like the code was adopted in 1985, probably after, after all of these were all built. And, and now somebody, you know, buys a piece of property, wants to be like everybody else and our code doesn't allow them to do that.
Well, you're looking at me, Mr. Mayor, so I assume that's kind of a question.
I can look, I can look at Josh, but.
I would answer this, not an opinion on, on the case, on this particular petition, but that that variances are part of the process. We deal with variances here throughout the year and it's, yes, we have the same variance come up all the time like we did at the truck stops for the sides, then it's time to make a change. In this case, I think we're talking about a particular part of the village. We may not want to change that code for the rest of the town or particularly for new construction. But in this particular area, that, this might be a case where you might consider variance for that very reason. So that, I would suggest that that's the purpose of the variance, to vary from the code for reasons that you believe are legitimate. Okay, what do you guys think? What do you want to do? You want to proceed? Any thoughts, cares, worries?
Is your question about dividing it or any, or anything?
The only other question I got is if you want to move it from 20 feet to five feet, I noticed on the existing structure, there's no downspouts or anything. So that water is going to go racing off there and it's going to roll. It'll, it'll hit the lot line.
Third, well, we could, we could put the downspouts, there are storm drains that are on the property?
I mean gutters to prevent the runoff off the roof. Wash, because it's going to go and it's going to wash out at the property line and I don't, I don't know what's over there.
Yeah, I mean, if the building, our department wants us to put in gutters, then I have no problem putting in gutters, you know?
Just to fill that up during the permit application.
Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem doing that.
Have any of the other property owners' neighbors, that kind of thing, expressed any? Because they all had to be notified of this process, has anybody expressed any?
No, it's no one. No, it doesn't. No question.
You guys want to break this out or do you want, do you guys want to vote on all of them? I've got two. You guys want to break it out or you want to vote on all of them? You got two, you got two that want to vote on the way that is.
Fine, vote as late as.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance as presented for 268 Mill Avenue.
So. This is for all three together.
All three together. Any other discussion? Quick, can you please call roll?
Ms. Fodor. Hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Steeney.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion, yes, six zero.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Mayor, I would just remind you that we are about to do the first public hearing.
All right. Stand back, guys.
Good night. Good night.
I made, I made it, I made it, I made the motion as variance as presented, which would apply that the ordinance is part of that. So really what we voted on was approving an ordinance 21-59. I mean, I did, I said I would make a motion approving the variance as presented, which included the ordinance 21-59. I didn't specifically state that in the motion. You guys want to re-vote or you?
What is that order?
Your ordinance is just.
The ordinance proves three variants.
He just didn't put a number.
I didn't, I didn't say, I didn't say the number.
He can, he can accept it now without a check.
All right. All right, now we're into the public hearings. I'll get this thing down, yeah.
This is one of the more challenging to get as we've had this first time.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will open a public hearing. Regarding. Regarding a property tax levy increase for the Village of Hampshire, annual tax levy for 2022. Ms. Lyons, you have a presentation.
I do.
Fantastic.
Um, right, so the first thing I'm going to discuss is the big village levy. I have a presentation to explain how the levy is calculated, where we got to our numbers and those types of things. This is kind of an extension of resolution that you passed two meetings ago with respect to the levy. And then each of the three SSAs that had an increase in over 5%, we will have a public hearing for as well. And I will discuss, have a short, very short presentation on each of those three. And the reason why we're having a public hearing this evening is because our request for the village levy is also over 5% and therefore requires a public hearing. Okay? All right, first of all, just to kind of go quickly over the property tax levy, an annual property tax levy must be adopted by the village board by ordinance. And the ordinance is going to be filed with the county clerk before the second Tuesday in December it must be filed. The county clerk will then calculate the extension and apply, apply any limitations. So we could ask for a bazillion dollars and she will, or they will limit that amount to the amount that is allowed under statute. King County will produce tax bills and collect the taxes from the property owners and then distribute those to the village during the months of May through November. And we just get rid of this little guy. Hopefully this doesn't kill him again. Okay. The funds identified in the levy are utilized by the village along with other revenue sources to support our budget obviously. All right. There are a few key property terms that, or property tax levy terms that I'd like to go over with you. The first is the tax levy itself, and that is the amount that the village will request to be raised from property taxes. Extension is the amount of money that the village will actually receive from property taxes. We utilize the Consumer Price Index, which is an indicator of inflation, and that's the basis for the maximum amount, the maximum, I'm putting that in air quotes, that we can request excluding the new property. And then EAV, and that, the equalized assessed valuation refers to the assessed value of your homes or the commercial property, the farm property, all the property here in the village. And the assessed value also is part of the calculation to determine what, what amount we can raise from property taxes. The final levy amount and the related taxes are determined by the King County Clerk's office, as I mentioned before, and they will apply the PTEL Property Tax Extension Limitation Law before we actually get our money. And again, we're having this meeting because the PTEL limits it to 5% unless we have new construction that allows us to capture a little bit more, which is what we're doing this evening. We have followed all of the requirements with respect to the presentation of the levy and the dollar amount that was talked about during the tentative levy amount along with that resolution. And we have had the clerk, our village clerk, sent in the information and it was published in the newspaper as required by statute on Thanksgiving Day, actually. So where do your property taxes go? Where do your property taxes go?
Oh, I love this.
This is my favorite graphic as well. The village gets 5.88 cents or did last year. This is based on last year's extension of every dollar that was charged in property taxes in the village. And just to show how important property taxes are to us, they make up approximately 27% of our general fund budget. So it's very important, a source of revenue for us. It's not a very colorful graphic, but the purple is our, is our
So it's kind of depressing that
Yeah. I just wanted to, you know, like have the
I appreciate your, your wanting to stick to the brand.
Yes, I did. Property taxes are the purple amount there. So the levy calculation is comprised of several different factors. The Consumer Price Index, a multiplier, the equalized assessed valuation. It's based on our prior year extension, and then it also includes new construction or new properties such as annexations and those kinds of things. Each year in January, the Illinois Department of Revenue will issue a memo that has the CPI index that will be used for the following December's levy. So in, in January of '22, I'll already know what we can, you know, start to make our calculation for, for '24. So we're talking about the collections that we're going to do in '23 this year. Or sorry, '22, '23 and '22.
I tell you the same thing we tell my five-year-old, don't rush this.
There we go. And then just to give you an idea of what the historical CPI index has been, it's, it's been well below 5% each year. So that might not be the case this year. So our Consumer Price Index for calendar year '20, or sorry, calendar year '21 to be used in '22, very, very well may exceed the 5%, but we will not be able to capture all of that Consumer Price Index because the maximum is 3%. So that's where you start your calculation. And then King County received a multiplier of one, so that's, that's good. That means that our county and all of our township assessors are doing a very good job in making your property values similar to those in other counties throughout the state so that there's not a great discrepancy between property values in various jurisdictions. So when we start with the, the EAV, the county produces a document in the fall. This was done the third week of September, I believe. Yeah. And so this, this shows what our EAV is for this calculation. And this year we're at 253 million.
Lori, can we ask?
So for the EAV, are we only taking those parcels that are within the village for this calculation?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, and one more question, just because I, because you're talking about EAV and I want you to move on for
Yeah, yeah.
Our assessor chooses to reassess every single year instead of every four years like all of the other assessors in the county.
So there are a few other townships that do the same thing. What happens is there are, there are multipliers like at the county level and at the local township level. And so what happens is she will, our township assessor receives a preliminary multiplier and she will go back and reallocate the dollars necessary to get a multiplier of one here. So that kind of appears to be a reassessment, if you will, every single year.
Okay, because I know, I mean, because I've asked these questions to the supervisor assessments and all the other townships do their, like, they may have, you know, 2% that they reassess each, you know, of their parcels that can reassess, you know, in a year.
Yes.
Ours is 88%. It's a huge amount. So instead of every four years getting this assessment, then it's a huge number every single time. So I'm just trying to find out if that reassessment, instead of waiting four years for it to catch up with you, ours catches up and that's, we get increased every year because it's reassessed. So I'm trying to figure out if that actually affects what we're trying to put together here. Are we using the most current ones or are we using the ones from four years ago that
No, this is, this number changes every single year.
Okay.
So, and I don't know that it's a true complete reassessment. It's just a reallocation of the dollars to make sure that she gets a multiplier of one. Does that make sense?
But does that, does that attach to the update that we each get every year?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Is there, is there bonus money for the assessor to achieve a certain goal each year?
Not that I'm aware of, no. No.
Look into, look into. Yeah, there's bonuses if they reach a certain threshold.
I, I'm not aware of that.
You mean in terms of the multiplier?
Yeah, and that's why we get reassessed every year.
And you're, Spoutschini, you're saying that the 88% of the parcels get a readjustment per year, right?
Yeah.
It's not an 88% adjustment.
No, 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 no.
It's an adjustment in an 88%
88% of the parcels get readjusted versus other townships where it's 2% or 3%.
Well, when you have a quadrennial assessment, which is what you're referring to, Cook County mostly, they'll do quadruples and then they do a market assessment every four years. In this case, what we're doing is, Lori explained, I think what you're seeing are very minor adjustments every year as opposed to big adjustments once every four years.
Thank you.
So if there were only a two-factor calculation in determining what our levy maximum could be, it would be the extension from last year, which was 1,103,841, and the lesser of 5% or the CPI of 1.4%. So that would have added $15,000 only to our dollar amount that we're receiving now. Multiplied by one would be 1,119,000 and change. But we do have the opportunity to capture that new property through annexations, new construction and those types of things. So this year, we believe that that's going to lead to about $59,000 extra. And then this is the same graphic that I showed a couple slides ago. This shows the new construction or new property in the village at 9,268,000. That compares with about $8.7 million in new property at this time a year ago. So this year we've requested an increase of 7%. The village is asking for $1,210,000. And when we do the calculation, and I always say if everything were to stay exactly the same, so if your home was valued at $250,000 as a fair market value last year, it would be again assessed at the same fair market value of $250,000. So with zero changes, we would expect to get $1,190,200 and the expectation would be that the rate would actually go down just because of the calculation, the way it works out. So how are we planning on using the levy? These are line items from the general fund that we will be using for the levy in the various pieces. So we, we do a general corporate levy that can really be used for any purpose, you know? And social security levy, we have an IRF, which is our non-police retirement fund. We have a levy line item for that. We also have a line item for liability insurance, audits and police protection. So I've picked the line items that we're going to, so this is, this is last year or this current year's budget. So it's, it's kind of odd in the sense that property taxes are, you know, they're collected in arrears. So we're working with this year's budget even though we're going to collect it next year. So this reflects the various pieces of how we intend to use the levy. And this just kind of shows where we were over the last year. So we have the levy requested in 2020, 1,147. It was actually extended to 1,130. This year we're requesting 2,210. And like I said, we will not get that amount, but this just shows the percentage of increase in various areas. And it leads to the 7% total down at the bottom. So you're going to ask, why do I have, you know, a giant increase in retirement fund? Or, you know, why do we do that? There are certain line items that have to not exceed the statutory maximum, so we have to keep that in mind. And then it also, it's, it's kind of a, I don't know what I want to say, a discretionary way to, to actually allocate how these are, how these dollars are going to be spent. Then this just shows how I expect, again, if nothing changes, this happens to use a $300,000 fair market value. Last year, the village would have received $454. And this year, because of the rate actually going down a bit, the village would collect 400, approximately $42. And then this is just my, always my ending graphic for, you know, I do one pie chart and one graphic. This is my ending graphic for this year. This is just kind of a reflection of the six cents that the village will collect on, on every dollar for your property taxes.
Did you take that picture or something?
I did, yeah. And I got, I don't know, some kind of software that like gets rid of the background, so it works out pretty good. If you notice, it's not cut out very well. Are there any questions with respect to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Every year I ask the same question.
Sure.
How do we put this into words that people are going to understand? Put the word out there because they're, all they're going to see is we raise their taxes. Even though that's not true, but that's all people see and we put up that question. We get that question every year. Ready?
Can answer that. You're asking these new taxpayers or persons who have this new property to pay the same amount that the other people pay. That gives you more revenue because there's more taxpayers or there's more value on that side of the ledger. If you don't do that, you could save some of the people or the existing residents some money, but it'll catch up to you.
No, I, I understand that, but what's our plan to get that message out to the you?
Well, to be honest, we do have, we have had that conversation this, the third time since I've been here, but I don't recall actually having the reaction that you thought. It hasn't really happened the last couple of years here.
No, but I, it just, I always have that same suspicion, so maybe we'll go with a dozen.
But then we If we can prepare a simple one paragraph statement that can be read at the ready, that would be helpful for social media. I think I might ask Mr. Shusin to help with that.
If I can ask them too, because I think a part of what you're saying is too, is that we, we asked for 7% last time as well?
We asked for 8.5% last year, actually.
Okay.
So we started with a, we started with a larger number. In other words, our extension was larger than it was the year before, so we can actually ask for less, even though the new property was more, so.
But when we asked for that amount, then what actually was it that we actually collected?
As far as a percentage?
We were trying to go for 8.5% and what did we actually increase?
Oh, gosh, I didn't do that calculation.
Okay, that's okay.
But, I mean, that's, that's on that other slide.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that there's a way to say last year we had an increase in the levy as well, but in effect, the taxpayer paid less.
Right, so this kind of is, is a graphic that we can, you know, we can do the calculation from this.
Okay.
We asked for 1,147. I guess I don't have the, the year before, so to tell you exactly what the increase was, but
But you do have the, the per household difference with
Yes.
$20 less per house, so I, I forget it. You did have that calculation.
Well, that's for, am I expected for next year?
Well, correct.
Right.
You probably had the same estimate from a year ago.
Because I think
Each individual taxpayer is actually going to pay just a little bit less, should.
Yeah.
The, the problem is, of course, the value of your home and up, you know, 11% in Chicagoland area in general. So somebody out of it in Hampshire as well.
Yeah.
So that balance, you know, that, that goes into the equation as well.
And one thing to be, you know, like, full disclosure, if you will, there was a new public act recently passed, actually Public Act 102-0519, that amended the property tax code. And in the past, the village, if you, if you'll notice going forward, you all will be involved in the budget this year, I actually budget to receive less dollars. I actually budget to receive less dollars than, um, we, will be extended to us because there are always adjustments that are made by the county. Either somebody didn't get their senior frees like they wanted or somebody's homestead exemption didn't get, um, properly, um, applied to their property tax bill. All of those comes, come as adjustments to the village, um, some positive, but most negative. Um, so this year, this change in the property tax law actually allows us to collect those dollars that were adjusted the prior year. So this year, I think the village is going to collect an extra thirteen hundred dollars. So our, it's not, it's not a lot, but just so you, so for comparison's sake, D three hundred is going to collect over nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, um, what's going to happen is, you know, our rate rather than be point four seven zero one, it might be point four seven zero two or something like that. So the rate, you know, full disclosure, we are going to get a little bit more than the extension actually. But again, we'll have adjustments this year that we'll be collecting next year. So it's kind of a rolling adjustment thing, but it's not huge for us since, you know, it's only six cents on the dollar.
Thank you very much for your silence.
All right.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, or can I close the public hearing? All right. Pro call vote please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Palestine. Mr. Robinson. Ms. Fogan.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, now we're in open session. Now, I'm going to convene the public hearing regarding a property tax increase for Village, uh, Special Service Area Number Ten, White Oak Ponds.
Yep.
Seven.
I need to change my presentation. Okay, are we ready?
Sure.
All right.
Let's do this.
Um, so, um, just to kind of, uh, take a, uh, not a deep dive, but a dive into, um, SSA number seven, Hampshire Hills. There are three detention areas there, um, totaling nearly eighteen acres. There's a one point nine seven acres of mowed area and seventy-two parcels, um, excluding any of those properties that were subject to this tax. Um, I didn't have the maps with me last time, so I thought I would include those on the ones that we're discussing. So, um, I'm going to use my cursor here. Um, up in this area is the area that's mowed and these are the two, uh, the, the green areas are the, um, detention areas. They're kind of, um, actually boggy areas, so, you know, retention, detention, um, they, they're designed all to drain. All three of those areas, even the grassy area that we, that we mow. Um, and then, uh, so just to go over what has been done there, as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, um, we had mowed in Hampshire Hills during my entire tenure here. Um, however, we, we never did really anything with the, um, areas that were designated in green on the prior slide. So, um, this past year, we have done some selective machine and hand clearing totaling nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Sorry? Um, and we've got some work to be done. Um, because we started the process, we feel it's important to continue to maintain those, those areas and get them, um, so that the system is performing as, um, designed. So we will be burning and applying herbicides to both of those, um, detention areas at a total cost of eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. So the total cost that's been incurred, um, over the last two years in, um, is twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. So at, at our last meeting, um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at, at your packet with respect to this, but I did kind of project out farther and you challenged me to, um, reduce it because I had it at ten thousand dollars. And, um, so what we've done, it might not be the best practice, um, but it is a way to save money is to extend the time between the burning, which is really the most expensive thing and something that we really cannot do in-house. So, um, and in our street department, if you had a chance to read my, um, agenda supplement, is trying to, um, get their aquatics pesticide license, which is above and beyond the licenses that they have currently, so that they can do some of this stuff in-house. So some of the things that are being asked to be done are overseeding, which they most definitely can do in-house, as well as, um, spraying these herbicides or, um, some of them are pellets that they actually apply to the boggy areas to, um, kill like, uh, cattails and those types of things. So, um, if you'll notice, um, like this seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars that's in the second blue thing, originally that was scheduled for fiscal, fiscal year twenty-four and we kind of extended it out to a third year. Now, this is the plan, but every single year we evaluate what's going on. And, um, obviously, as you can see down at the bottom, I did two things. Obviously extended it out further and then, um, you were concerned because, uh, we, uh, there were no two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fair market value homes in that particular neighborhood. So I actually pulled somebody's tax bill and I filed a three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar bill. And so, um, kind of did the calculation down at the, in the bottom rows there to show what their tax bill will be. Now, um, there's really no way around this, um, to keep these ponds performing as, as they were designed. So I'll entertain any questions that you have about this particular SSA.
We'll go back to them now.
Yep.
Please.
I'm, I'm here, I'll go backwards. Here we go.
In this property, what are we classifying as ponds?
Um, the, the detention areas are up here in the corner. Um, that backs up to the, um, Dorothy Schmidt and well number nine property. Um, and then this green area, unit two, and the green area down to the south, unit one.
There's a pond up there in the corner?
It's not really a pond, it's, it's, it's a, it is a detention area that drains promptly, but yes, um, they, they actually mow some property up in there.
I'm looking at satellite, I've just, all of those areas are mowed.
Yeah.
There's no.
They're not intended to retain water, they're intended to drain as low as, all of those are.
That I understand. But what I'm saying is I'm looking at them, they look mowed, I don't see, and, and I'm not there physically, but I wouldn't think we're mowing if there's a ton of overgrowth.
Correct.
But they all look mowed and.
You're just talking about the one up in the northwest.
No, I'm looking down.
The green ones are not being mowed.
They're not, yeah.
So the unit two is not?
No.
Nor is unit one.
And there's unit one.
It's, it's, no, you don't want, uh, unit one is the big one at the bottom, yes. But the, um, the one that's not identified at all is up here in the very corner where my cursor is, up in the, yeah, northwest corner.
Hey Lori, I think you flattened it out. I think, I, I think Lori talked to me about this a second ago. I think she did attempt and did accomplish what you asked her to do, was smooth it out a little bit and reduce the cost of this particular one. But I would like to echo what she said and say it's really critical that we stay on the schedule. You know, we're making up for fifteen years of lost maintenance and it's kind of faster homeowners a little bit to do that. Those are not extraordinary costs.
Do you guys have any questions for, or about Special Service Area Number Seven?
Sorry, I had asked at the last meeting about capital funds being used to make up for the village. Uh, I had looked up, I did some searching through the Illinois municipal code. And here it says the capital fund used for capital improvements, repairs and/or replacements of specific types of municipal equipment or other tangible properties. Personal. Mr. Schuster, is it, am I correct in understanding that tangible property, both real and personal, can include real estate such as land?
To acquire it.
So this is capital improvements, repairs and/or replacements of specific types of municipal equipment for other tangible property, both real and personal.
Well, what you're asking me is, it, it, does the special service area maintenance qualify as capital?
What I'm saying is that we are, we are looking to do more maintenance in an area because the village did not maintain it. Therefore, it is a major improvement being made on real estate. Can the capital fund by that definition cover that expense?
It's a good question.
So I will.
I don't know the answer off top.
I would think that any type of the maintenance that we're doing right now is not, is not a capital expenditure or would be for, from, for an audit standpoint.
But can we, can we agree that this, the large chunk of cash that we're outlaying is not truly an ongoing yearly maintenance? To what Mr. Hedges said, is because of fifteen, eight years of not doing maintenance, we are not working that. So if you let a building go into disrepair for fifteen years, then we have to come in and fix it. That's not necessarily maintenance.
We did that in this very building that you're sitting in.
Right. We use, we use capital to fix it, correct?
Uh, no, we did not use capital.
So that was general.
It was.
Would we classify that as maintenance? Or would we classify that as repair?
Uh, no.
It's a very fine line.
It, it is a fine line. In the aggregate, it did reach our capitalization threshold. It's kind of an unusual situation though because, um, we don't keep capital items on the balance sheet in the general fund, so it's, it's.
What's that I get to wonder, I thought I brought up a bad example, but Trusty Kelly, we had this conversation last night to say why. The neglect caused lower taxes for those homes for those fifteen years, they didn't pay for any maintenance. We didn't do anything. So my, my suggestion would be that they're just catching up with what they can. Sure, if you moved into the home now and you weren't there for the last fifteen years, you'd be, be the sins of the village. The whole, as, as we all know, the whole purpose of an SSA is to keep the cost to the user, which essentially is a user fee rather than spreading it across the whole. So you as a board choose to do policy wise, we'll, we'll try and.
Does that answer your question?
No. I still don't understand whether or not, it sounds like Mr. Schuster had also said he's, it's, we just don't know.
If you're asking, if you're asking legally, can, could we use general fund?
No, I'm saying can we use capital funds?
To come from other sources?
From our capital fund to make up.
Where do those other, they're collected? The funds that are in our capital fund or what they came from?
They came from either the general fund or one of the enterprise.
Correct, but there is a percentage of the village can allocate every year toward capital projects and certain capital funds. My question was, do the capital funds, the funds that are in there right now, be used to catch us up? And then we recalculate what an ongoing maintenance of that area would be, rather than charging so much to get it up to where it needs to be and then leveling out over the future years passing.
I think, um, I.
Lori, can I interject you?
Sure.
You're asking two separate questions. One, is it legal? And then the second one was a policy decision on whether we should. So I think we should give you a legal answer, we don't have one. My suspicion is it would be legal. Um, it would be a significant change of policy, but it would probably be legal, but we should give you a firm opinion on it. And we can do that. I did not get, understand that that was a legal question at the last meeting, but I do understand.
Yeah, I've just been trying to figure out if our capital fund can be used to.
I can tell you.
When it gets to a point like this, I'm not saying for every SSA, but when it gets to a point that it causes such a significant increase because the village didn't maintain, that's where my question is, does that become?
I would just suggest, when you look at our capital fund, we have twenty-five million dollars of unbudgeted capital items right now. So we're really involved. It's not just our SSA's that we've been collecting, but we will give you a clear answer. I, I understand clearly tonight.
And can I make just one comment? My recommendation would be to approve the levies this evening. You can always abate a portion of the taxes, um, in the future, like next, next year, even January, February time, right?
Hey, any other questions about SSA number seven? And then we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. SSA number seven. Questions or comments? Pro call vote, please.
Ms. Fogan. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine. Aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, so the next public hearing is for SSA number ten this time.
Yes.
I'm hoping.
All right, SSA number ten is White Oak Ponds. This contains four retention areas totaling thirty-three point eight five acres, two point five five acres which are mowed by village personnel and one hundred and seventy-three parcels, um, uh, to fund this SSA excluding, that excludes the exempt part, uh, properties.
What, what's an exempt property?
So somebody could have, um, it could be owned by a not-for-profit organization, it could be a disabled veteran, it could be a village-owned property, those types of things, so. They're not subject to real estate taxes. So this is a map of, um, the ponds, uh, in, in White Oak Ponds, these are actual detention ponds. Um, and don't ask me why the pond that's in the northeast corner is unit eight. It's non-sequential and it kind of bothers me, but that's the way it goes. All right. Um, any questions about the map? All right. Um, so the work that has been completed, we've done selective machine and hand clearing in unit one and unit two. And unit two also received four herbicide applications. Um, unit three received some machine and hand clearing. And, um, the total cost that has been incurred, um, since taking on this SSA is eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. The work that's going, is, um, going to be done this spring are additional herbicide applications and machine clearing of unit three and unit eight.
With, can you go back to the map to see what cells are?
Yep. Unit three and unit eight will receive a machine clearing, so northeast and the one on, on the east side, northwestern and east. Questions?
Are you saying that those are the ones that will be done or the ones that were just done?
Three and eight will be done. One and two portions of them have been done.
Has anything been done to two as a part of the Highland remediation that was done? Because didn't we increase the flow from Highland into unit two as a part of that fix?
Yes. Yes, that's accurate.
And it had done to two as a part of that major project?
No, not as part of that project.
Well, I thought that they went back and cut the, they were in the drainage.
Not charged to the SSA if that's what you're.
No, no, I don't mean charged to the SSA, I'm just talking in general.
They cut trees out of the, out of the drainage so that it, uh, what was there was working.
There was a flare section, I think, that was adjusted as well.
But, but that wasn't charged to the SSA, but, but to Trusty Kelly's point, there was work done to that.
Well, no, I was asking if there was. I, I didn't know if, if we just opened up a larger drain into an area and then didn't fix the area we were draining into, or if we actually fixed the area we were draining into. That's, that was just a question that I asked. Cause you said some work had been done in two.
Yes.
I didn't know if, I'm not, it's not whether SSA paid or the project, I'm just wondering if that was a part of the EDI job to say, we're going to put a greater flow of water into here and so we need to fix what we're flowing.
That was, no, the, um, this, the costs and the information, the work that was done that I said was unrelated to the Highland Avenue, uh, Stormwater Project. So that, anything that was done that was related to Highland Avenue would be above and beyond.
Do we know if anything was done as a part of that Highland Avenue project?
I believe that, um, there were, as, as Mr. Coles said, some trees removed from the flare end sections that were the, where that drainage was going.
That was just black and.
Flow, flow.
They've done, they haven't done anything to the pond that's taking on the additional water, no.
That was, that was Mr. Robinson's comment. Uh, he was concerned that, um, it would take away capacity that was being used by the subdivision itself. And it was determined that there was plenty of capacity for, for that extra storm drainage on how.
It, it says on here that one, two and three were cleared, will this be last year, fiscal year twenty-one?
Um, oh, I didn't read my stuff here. Um, hang on. I don't, I don't think three has been cleared at all, let me, let me.
It was last year.
Okay.
And it's on here, it's budgeted on here for fiscal year twenty-one, but then you look at fiscal year twenty-two, we're clearing three again. And it's on here, it's budgeted on here for fiscal year twenty-one, but then you look at fiscal year twenty-two, we're clearing three again.
So if, I'm not sure if the whole thing was done then. I, I apologize. I don't have those notes with me. Um, but I know that three and eight are definitely planned for additional clearing, uh, maybe in the case of, of unit three. So I know like unit one is, I'm sorry, a um, let's see, oh, uh. Um, is a giant pond and not all of that has been, um, all of the buffer areas have been cleared. So there's additional work to be done. We've kind of had to break it down into bits and pieces just because there's so much territory.
But like then, he looks, the next, any maintenance on one is not till twenty-seven. Fiscal year twenty-seven, uh, unless I'm misinterpreting this.
So spraying goes across all ponds and then um, clearing one, two, and three um, goes off to twenty-seven. That was done already. So.
Right, that was done last year.
Done in twenty and a partial, uh, I think a portion of it was done in twenty-one, yes.
But if there's a lot left to do there, why is it getting pushed off until six, five, six years from now?
So we've made, so um. What's that?
It's two years of the public.
So again, this is a way to spread out the maintenance. So we've done the work that we've, that McGinty and, and Dave Starett feel was necessary to keep the ponds functioning as designed. So, I mean, if we had a million dollars, we would do some, you know, like get it, get it all done, be done with it and then just maintain it. So um, yeah, we, we're kind of biting it off in bits and pieces and, and, yeah.
I, I think the concern is that three seems to be repeated in two different lines, but it's the smallest of the four. And what we're understanding from what you're saying is that one is the one that needs to be done in bits and pieces. So one is last year and potentially this upcoming year as well. Does that represent?
Yeah. If I, if I could interject for a second, um, I, I'll take responsibility for this. If, if you want to get into this level of detail, we need to have Dave here and probably McGinty. Lori, Lori's not really ready in a position to. Specific details, I mean, she remembers a lot because she's been here a long time. It's really, really not, we, fair for me to let her. Um, she doesn't have all those answers. If you, if you want to go into detail, I can get detailed quotes and, and plans from McGinty. Um, and we can have Dave come again if you'd like. But Lori's not our expert on ponds. As much as she knows about it, it's really not her, her responsibility.
I apologize. I don't have the same notes with me that I did at the last meeting, so I should have brought those back. No, I.
Yeah, we should do that because, you know, you got uh, clear one, two, and three in twenty-one. And then you got uh, clear one, two, and three again in twenty-seven. And, and I'm licensed the same as Public Works. I carry the same license and I also carry an aquatic. Uh, the damage in those years of not doing nothing is gonna take and eat that ten thousand dollars that you spent in twenty-one up in three years. It'll be gone. So everything you did in, in twenty-one, by twenty-four, you won't even be able to tell they did anything. So we, we probably should have, she's right, we should have McGinty in.
I think we should probably arrange a Public Works committee.
That's what I was just gonna ask, is maybe we, maybe the Public Works Committee can meet with them? And then you can bring us a report back to the board?
If anybody else wants to participate in the meeting, they could too, but I think it would be appropriate to have Dave.
I just gonna be respectful. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that you understand this more than we do, so we.
Yeah, but I think, I think the, the new people, I think we should, we should have McGinty here.
No, I, I understand, but it would give you an opportunity to have your first Public Works meeting and.
Whatever form you choose. The only thing I'm asking is that, Dave, this is the recommendation of McGinty to David, and David made this recommendation to Lori and I. So uh, this is really their recommendation and they're not here to defend it. They, Lori and I are really not in a position to get into this level of detail. I apologize for that. We thought we covered that the last time, but we've only made very small changes. Lori's only made very small changes in the one since the last meeting.
Right, just a procedural question, or not procedural, but a question on what you had said earlier on our licensing, and I understand the aquatics warrant and things like that. For the, the lines that say clear, the burning I get, but the, where they say clear for one, two, and three, and then clear three and eight. Are you saying that our staff are not certified to be able to do that work?
We don't have the machinery. I mean, it could.
They don't have, they don't have the tools or whatever's necessary.
They don't have the equipment.
Okay, all right.
And if they, and, and if they were to rent the equipment, uh, other vital things in town would suffer while they're doing that.
Yeah.
There's not enough staff.
I just wasn't sure what, like, what we're talking about when we say certifications and.
The certifications that we carry are to, to use certain chemicals on the stuff.
All right.
Uh, Aquaside is another company. They're out of Minnesota. Uh, I've given Dave a few of the books. There's chemicals in there that clear cat, that, that kill cat tails. You don't have to be licensed. You can sprinkle them on. They come in pellets, they come in spray. Uh, uh, you can do it. She can do it. You don't have to be licensed.
Uh, I don't see that.
And some of the chemicals, some of the chemicals that kill the cat tails are not powerful to water, fish, or humans.
But I think to address that issue, it's not that I'm disagreeing, I'm just confused. And as a representative of people who are spending a lot of money on taxes, I want to make sure that what we're saying we're gonna do is actually gonna be money well spent.
Very true.
So, you know, please don't take it as a, you know, attack of any kind. It's just seeking to understand and making sure that we're using that money wisely. So.
And, and we are, it's not gonna be a perfect plan because we neglected fifteen years and we're, and we're not, you've given us direction to do this gradually, not to do it all at once and get caught up. We had the funds to spend all at once. Or if we took trustee Kelly's suggestion and used capital funds and not buy squads or not buy fire truck, or excuse me, a plow truck.
Better than buying a fire truck.
Then you can catch up, you can catch up.
That's their problem.
Um, I, I think given what we're doing, I think within two or three years, two or three more years, we'll be in pretty good shape. That's where I believe we are, but we, we can provide you much more deals. Tonight is, you're not locked into any of these specific expenditures tonight. You're just locked into the levy after, after we vote, after you vote. So the adjustments can be made to the maintenance as long as we stay within the funds that are levied.
And that's understood. I just want to make sure that you understand, because that's why we're questioning it, because if we levy for taxes and then we collect money, but then the plan wasn't solid and we didn't question that, that's on us.
Right, and what we're, just what we're struggling with is the, the maintenance plan and the levy are very, two very different things. And Lori's pulled together here and it's really difficult to do when you're working on multi-years and you're levying in advance of the work being, in arrears of the work being done. I can agree. Well, but there are, there are ways that we can present this to you better. We'll do it in another forum, either the Public Works here, we'll, we'll bring the proper people in and do it.
Well, my stand in this, the president, uh, this is all due to be filed by December twenty-eighth.
I don't.
Well, that's step one. Step two, until about March one, you can file an abatement. You could, a separate ordinance that says, wait a minute, we, we asked for this, but we know we, we can pull it back. But a, after about March first, you're, you know, it's in the pipeline. But there's a real short deadline coming up to have something on file with the county clerk uh, in terms of further review of the planning side of it that Mr. Hedges just described as opposed to the levy side.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for SSA number ten, or can we move on to SSA number twelve? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
The vote, starting.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson. Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, votes in.
All right, SSA number twelve is Hampshire Meadows. It includes eight point eight eight acres of mowing area and one hundred and fourteen parcel, excluding those exempt parcels. Um, I don't have a fancy map because this does not have any um, retention or retention areas that the village maintains. There is a uh, detention area over in the southwest corner here, and that is currently privately owned. Um, it's possible that that property would be um, uh, accepted as a village asset at some point, um, but it currently is privately owned. Uh, and it's taxed uh, based on its fair market value, just like other, their homes and property. So there's a lot of mowing that goes on along here, uh, especially um, along the frontage of Route seventy-two. So um, uh, you can see that the, we started out in fiscal year twenty-one with a negative, um, and so we levied uh, ten thousand, we actually probably levied um, eleven thousand dollars and collected just a little bit less than that due to those adjustments that we talked about. Um, and then, um, so last year we uh, we ended with a positive, or ended it with a positive at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, therefore we reduced the levy um, to more closely match the expenses from the prior year. And this year we actually expect um, our wages to increase a bit. There is a significant increase there. Um, obviously there's no more territory to be uh, mowed. But um, the mowing that was done this year uh, increased the cost. I believe you asked uh, Ms. Holder about the number of hours that were allocated to this? And it came out around three hundred and sixty hours um, for the SSA. Um, we mow about six months a year, um, just like you do on your personal property and um, so um, that, that is included in this dollar amount. So yes, we are increasing over the five percent. However, it's still a significant decrease um, as compared to the fiscal year um, twenty-one collections, so. Anybody have any questions on this one?
Yes, I have just a clarification then. It's privately owned? So is it owned by like the homeowners association?
No, it's actually owned by the property owner that owns that section on the end.
Okay, so if it's privately owned.
We're not doing anything there, so all I'm talking.
Okay, so we're not, okay, you were talking about mowing, that's what I said.
Yeah, all I'm talking about is mowing, not that area, just like the frontage areas and other common areas in, in the subdivision.
Okay, which the, which are now private.
Correct.
Okay.
But we're mowing, what did I say, five point eight eight acres of.
But along with the mowing, there's weed whacking, fertilizer, uh, seeding areas that are bad, so there's more than just driving tomorrow.
Well, in the map.
Yes.
Show.
Oops.
Except, like there it says eight point eight eight area acres mowed. This entire left side that's open except for maybe uh, the strip along the frontage of seventy-two and that private property is all farmland. It's, this last year it was corn, corn in New York, or soybeans. Year before that it was corn, so it's actually farmland land. We're not mowing any of that.
No, we're, no, I didn't mean to say that we were mowing.
I'm just trying to figure out where the eight point eight acres is.
Yeah, it's a big area.
Uh.
Eight acres is a lot of area.
On the side of town, I, I'm not, I'm not discounting what you're saying, but in that subdivision, it's hard, I'm hard pressed to believe there's eight point eight acres.
Okay.
And the park isn't even that big.
Instead of the other park, you wouldn't mow the park.
We wouldn't.
The park is totally.
They, they can mow it.
It's always like that.
Fix thing out.
It's, it's, it's not really a question for you, you guys.
I just, that's what I'm trying to see when I, when I, when I look at some of this.
Sure.
I know you're recording what you're given and then, and I really appreciate the detail. I just, I know that that big area, that may look like a big area we mowed actually.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's probably thirty acres.
Where's the parking? Where's the parking?
On the right side, that bottom right corner.
That's to the semi circle.
That's Dorky Schmidt.
Oh.
So.
Cause you, you, you cut through the corn and it opens up to a big vast grass area that, that the village.
But that's the area right there. There's no eight point eight acres that we're mowing in there.
If you take a walk over there and you walk.
There's two different SSAs in that area.
That's, that's not the same SSA.
To the right of Dorky Schmidt or to the east of Dorky Schmidt is a different SSA.
Eight, that, yeah, I'm talking to the south of Dorky Schmidt. There's no SSA.
That.
That, that's the grassy area that I was talking about in SSA number seven.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing the eight acres. I just knew that, I think, that's all farmland, so I'm trying to figure out where we're.
Yeah, cause the only thing I ever see over there is I, I see that parking item as you go into the subdivision and it's there.
But that's not mowed. That's landscape and I doubt somebody else does. Usually volunteers out there.
Yeah, that's true. I know that they mow from uh, you know, before the memorial sign that's no longer there all the way to, you know, the edge of the subdivision, all the way to.
Oh, oh, along Route seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
That's part of it.
Is that eight acres?
It's probably not, I don't, yeah.
I don't, I, not a question to anyone, just uh. Any other questions?
All right, any other questions about special service area number twelve? We're going to, can we close the public hearing? I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing here. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Okay, we are now back into open session, quote unquote. Now, you will see in section eight here. It says that we have consent agenda. We did this to try to save time. If you are looking at the consent agenda and you would like to pull something out of the consent agenda to vote on, or if you intend to abstain because you might live in that area or something of that nature, uh, we can talk about that now. We can pull individual items out, or if you're comfortable, we can move and just vote at one time. It is completely up to you. We can talk about it in detail. We can do, we can discuss them individually and vote on them once. We can, we can do whatever it is that you guys would like to do. We've used the consent agenda a few times in the past, not very often, but uh, this just moves the meeting along.
I, I would like to ask that SSA twelve be removed, uh, just because I live in that area and I'm fighting to abstain.
Yeah, removed from the agenda.
From the consent agenda.
Yeah, and we'll just vote on that separate.
And vote on that separate, cause my, because I live in that area, I'm fighting to abstain from that one particular SS.
Okay. Now, Mr. Schuster, there's no, not, I'm not discounting both, but is there a con, a conflict of interest for voting on something like an SSA in the area in which you live? Other than.
Not if you're, if you're, it's gonna cost you financially.
Yeah, I don't really think so, but it, 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 it's still up to Mr. Kelly if you.
I, I understand that. I just legally, is there any type of conflict that we need to be concerned about?
It's more different than raising your own taxes.
Yeah, the levy.
Yeah, I don't levy if that's all we're.
Okay.
What, what's under reducing?
Giving them the money, cause this is going up.
I know, that's what I'm wondering.
I'm just doing it for me, I'm not speaking. I just, I just made sure because I saw that there were questions from the new trustees. That's why I thought I'd ask. I'm not signaling you out, I was just asking. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna vote on special service area number twelve. Does that mean that we need to renumber these things or? But, or, or how does that work?
No, I think he just, that.
Just remove that.
It's removed from the consent agenda in a minute to reflect that.
Okay, all right, so my question, all right, all right. Right, yeah, no, yeah, okay, all right.
Number twelve, we'll go, go to the village management report.
Correct. All right, any other ones that we want to remove?
Oh.
Is it appropriate to remove, to abstain? From.
So, no, that's, it's totally up to you. If you want to do it, we'll, we'll pull the.
I know, it's up to me. I'm, I'm, what is proper etiquette? We have no opinion on etiquette here.
No, not.
I don't get it, and we're not even giving you recognition.
As far as, as far as, as far as our council is concerned, there's no conflict. So, and there's nothing unethical about voting on where you live. If you choose, if you don't want to do it, we'll pull it up.
No, I'm just asking the question in case.
Okay, so then I will, uh, so I will approve, I, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of removing, or do I have to do this just like you did the other one? I have to vote in your affirmative, right?
Well, first, just a minute. First of all, it takes a unanimous consent of the board to use the consent agenda process at all. So there should be a motion to approve the consent agenda first.
Okay, that, that's.
Everybody needs to vote yes on that to, to proceed, otherwise there'll all be single votes.
Okay.
But it would be, I think, exclusion of number.
Then there'll be a second vote. The second vote would be whether to approve the items that are on the consent agenda, which are gonna be one less because of Mr. Kelly's request.
Okay.
So the first vote is for us to approve, approve using a consent agenda for all but the one that I've asked to remove.
Yes, you can exclude that one now, then you don't have to do it later.
Okay.
All right, let's, so how would I make that motion?
You would entertain a motion to agree to the consent agenda, agree to the consent agenda, and that with the exception of item twelve.
Okay.
When he said it has to be an evidence.
Yes.
So, yeah.
One person votes no.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of removing number twelve from the consent agenda.
I brought that in just to clarify the way we just stated that.
Or agreeing to use a consent agenda.
Yes.
Not to agree.
Okay, I apologize. Let's...
It's a two-step process, Mr. President. First, we're going to have a vote to use a consent agenda.
I will, I will entertain a motion to approve the use of a consent agenda with the exception of removing number twelve from the consent agenda.
So...
Is that fair?
I don't think we can remove anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said we could.
No, not yet.
Yes, they can, yes, let them know we're going.
Because we can go down. We can go down.
She'd have to go think about the use of a consent agenda.
Next vote's...
That's what A is, A is... The next one, the next vote will be to approve the items that are on the consent agenda.
Time out, because there's lots of conversation.
Longest motion ever.
Are we saying that the new consent agenda, that we are being asked if we unanimously approve the usage of, is what is in the packet minus SSA number twelve?
That's the motion I heard, yes, sir.
Okay.
Good job. Good job.
All right, so do I have first and second? I still ask, you sure do. All right, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Okay.
All right.
It's just supposed to be...
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson. Mr. Reed.
Aye.
We should pass seven table. Oh, brilliant.
All right, so, all right, so, so, next, next, the consent agenda is as, is as in, as in the packet, except number twelve is not a part of the consent agenda. So pretend it doesn't exist. That's going to be in the village manager's report. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. Please don't make me read all of them.
All can read.
No.
What'd you say?
All items on the consent agenda.
Yeah, minus twelve.
I was kidding.
All right, so that's my motion. Do I have first and second yet, please? I have first. I have a second. We have any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
So, no, you're first.
It's more of a comment slash question about SSAs in general.
No, 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 you have to approve a motion, don't you, before you...
No, he said...
No, that's a motion and second, and then there's discussion.
So, I know they're for the good of the area that they're intended for. However, let me just use number ten, White Oak Pond, for example. So the pond in the southwest corner is used for drainage from other areas of town, Panama. We just redid the infrastructure underneath Highland that drains into that pond. So they're taking on water there that is from out, I hate to make it like a boundary thing, but they're taking on water outside their SSA, yet the residents of that SSA are tasked with paying for that pond maintenance. So is it really for the good of the people living there? Or is...
It's a fundamental question, is what you're getting at.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
No, I completely agree with you, but it's like, it's a fundamental question, right? Like, it's kind of like a park, right? Our residents pay for our parks in this part of the park district, but it doesn't stop other people from other towns coming in to use them. It's the same thing. You're paying, as you live, you live in this area, you're paying for these ponds, but you're getting everybody else's water.
I think, I think what Eric's saying is Highland should be included in the SSA because we're taking their water.
Well, everybody else that's draining into there.
But...
Yeah, I don't, I understand.
So what I'm saying is, is it, is it... We talked, do we really need the SSAs?
I don't know that, do we have the authority to abolish SSAs if we so chose?
No.
I didn't think that we did because of the state...
Not for detention, you do have the authority to amend SSAs and change their values.
We could look at enlarging that one.
I think we need to really look at enlarging not just that one, but other ones, like, for example, seven is probably taking water from, what was it?
Eight.
Twelve, what do you think?
Eight.
It, it could be, I don't know.
Trust me, I think your, your point that we made, the village made a, made fiscal adjustments. We made, we had a major construction improvement, changed the drainage. We discussed it at the time, by the way, that that water was going to be draining into an SSA pond that was maintained by the, paid for by those residents only. At the time, I believe it was considered to be rather insignificant, the amount of water compared to all the other stormwater in the area. I think that was a discussion a year ago, or eighteen months ago, whenever we approved that. But you could, you could expand an SSA. You cannot abolish them. They're, we don't really have a choice here. That's a can you have any comments?
Because I'm not of a thought that, you know, me personally, like, it's kind of like that part of conversation, right?
So...
But we're going to grass, we're doing all kinds of maintenance, but only the people in that area are paying. But yet, it impacts other areas of town.
Can an SSA be expanded to be the entire town?
No, no. I think we would have to show a direct benefit of those taxpayers.
Because that would be no different than just increasing the tax levy, and everybody's property taxes go up evenly, as opposed to individual neighborhoods getting taxed more or less because of the SSA.
There are some communities that do have, that do pass referendums for stormwater considerations, so...
Then if we were to do, if we were to do that, then the SSAs would go away?
No.
But it could lower the rate.
It could, absolutely. And the other solution is to do like we do in Tuscany Woods. They have a homeowners association. The village owns that property, but the homeowners association agree, agreement, there are documents that's in place, states that they will take care of it. Ours is, so it becomes a backup SSA, even though it's village property. So if everybody wants to create a homeowners association, you know, that would rectify this as well. Then they have to deal with it themselves.
Yeah.
All these SSAs are created in the development agreements, so that's, that's the only time that we can avoid an SSA, is at the development stage.
Okay, so since we haven't had a new development agreement come across this desk, we will stay here and remember that, so whatever happens.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I think you need to look at this free and unless...
Not, not a brand new one, not, not for new residential development, then with time speaking.
Right, I mean, like in Oak Stead, when we redrew Oak Stead, and we come back to it early next year to redraw Prairie Ridge as well. So those are the times when those development agreements are open.
Okay, back to the, well, I'm just saying, we need to look at this and...
I agree. I mean, do I want to take that?
No, you don't, you don't, you don't, Bill, E I could calculate the amount of water, additional water it's taken on. Rather than going through a whole schmeele, if he comes back and, and they, they know what pipes they put in, they can calculate the amount of gallons going through.
I don't need to know the additional amount of water, I just need to know where it's coming from.
Well, I understand, but if, if we're going to try and incorporate a whole nother area for ten thousand gallons of water, is it worth it?
Okay.
Sure.
Hey, we haven't gotten off these so far, let's keep it coming.
What I'm about to say is on me, it's just a comment on the fourth floor, in case you are like me and just realize that the consent agenda is not just for SSAs. The tax levy that we talked about, and also the tax includes two abatements of taxes.
Well, let's start with...
I understood that.
I did, I, I looked at it and said, wait, there's fifteen items. I thought the consent that we were talking about, when we just went through everything, was to consent on that, all the SSAs.
That's what I thought it was.
This line.
Did not realize that it was...
I'm happy to entertain any questions.
One more question, one time, unless you prefer to do it another way.
Right, this is the word, Baron, now you...
So let's, let's talk about this. Ms. Lyons?
Yep, so we've been through the ordinances for the SSAs. The next two items on the consent agenda would be a resolution approving the administrative reports for SSA thirteen and fourteen, which are the infrastructure SSAs that are in Lakewood and Tuscany Woods subdivision. So along with these administrative reports, they're substantial in paperwork. It includes a special tax rule that, after evaluating the dollar amounts needed for the bonds and the administrative expenses for those two SSAs, they divvy up the taxes required by property type. This is not an abnormal tax, but it is an assessment based on the type of home, single family, duplex, or townhome. And so those special tax rules are inside those administrative reports. The taxes required are less than the amount required in the original bond documents. All of that is set out in advance when the, when the bonds are issued. And so because it's less than is called for in the bond documents, the following two items are ordinances abating the extra taxes that are not required. So are there any questions on that?
You're removing, so item, in the agenda, item fourteen and fifteen is to remove extra taxes from those areas.
It's actually item twelve and thirteen.
Sixteen, no.
Item fourteen and fifteen are bonds, we'll talk about those next. Twelve and thirteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's four different.
There are four abatements, yes.
Thank you.
Honestly.
Item...
Twelve has, twelve has been removed from the consent agenda. So it will not be part of this rule.
Special Service Area twelve. Not item twelve.
Item nine, item nine.
Yes.
Which, had I voted, I would have all of these abatements casually.
Are there any questions about the resolutions for abatements for special service area thirteen or fourteen? It's pretty straightforward, actually. If you didn't make the abatements, they would be taxed at the higher amount that's called for in the bond documents, and there would be access in the SSA to pay future bond payments. But these are the dollar amounts required, so it's a good thing to abate those taxes.
Is one of those on, we're, we're literally, we're not going to... Phasing it out? Which one of them? Isn't there one that we're phasing out because there's no need for it anymore?
Not in these two, no.
Okay.
That was a special service area one, where Lakewood is taking care of their...
Okay, so that's the one I'm taking out.
That one is not in the ordinances at all. There is no levy for the maintenance of the ponds in Lakewood subdivision, because they are taken care of.
Okay.
We have any other questions? I want everybody to be able to answer, or feel comfortable in what they're voting on.
And then I'll go to fourteen and fifteen to answer the questions with respect to that as well.
And if there's any follow-up questions.
Yep. So the ordinances fourteen and fifteen abate the taxes that are called for in the bond documents on the bonds that the village has issued itself. These are, these are actually debt that we have acquired for the water tower. The Elm Street Water Tower is included, some water and sewer, other sewer projects. The, let's see, trying to think. There were debt, all of these are refunding bonds, and they're alternate revenue sources. So what that means is the village has pledged its full faith and credit using a municipal utility tax to make these payments. And because there are sufficient funds available, already allocated towards making these payments, we abate the taxes. And it's important that we do that, because if we were not to, if you were not to do that, it would limit the village's ability to potentially use the alternate revenue source bond funding in the future and subject you to legal action by tax protesters. So the goal is that it's like an absolute, like dire straits, you would allow the levy to go through. And if you don't abate, because these dollar amounts were in the original bond documents, the levy will be assessed to the people, we don't want to do that. So we're moving those down this year, and we'll know taxes collected for debt payments.
Any questions about the tax abatements or the tax levy?
How does that change our, or affect what we talked about with the tax levy? If we're saying we're abating all taxes collected for the debt obligations?
Yes.
How does that affect the levy that you just talked about?
It does not affect it at all. This would be, this would be a levy on top of the village's levy.
If you had to do it.
If you had to do it. I mean, it's already done technically. Yeah, yeah, so we're undoing it. It was done years ago, when the original, in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and sixteen, when the bonds were actually refunded and issued again.
So to get a favorable interest rate on the bonds, you say, look, we're going to collect the money from these municipal electric tax and phone tax, and we use that money to pay the bonds. But in case we don't get enough, we'll, we have a tax levy to pay the bill when it comes, no matter what. So each year, you look at it, and then, and this one's been very, these two have been very good. They've always had sufficient revenue to pay, so you, you strike off the tax levy that you don't need.
And we actually...
And that has no effect on your total general fund levy.
And just really quickly, we actually use the actual, like enterprise fund or whatever that actually incurred the debt, to actually pay the debt rather than municipal utility tax. So it's kind of like a double backup, if you will. This would be like a third backup. You have your original design to be paid for either by the street department, the water department, the sewer department, or the backup would be the municipal utility taxes. Or if there's not enough money between those two sources, then you would fall back on this property tax, and we do not need it.
Okay. Any follow-up questions from Ms. Lyons regarding the abating, the abatement of taxes, levy, special service areas? I want everybody to feel comfortable. If everybody feels comfortable, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Wait, but you did it, you did it already.
Okay, we have first and second? I'm sorry, it's been a long day. So I will, is everybody comfortable? Can I call, can I have Ms. Clerk call roll?
And that's to approve the consent agenda.
As presented minus special service area twelve.
Yes.
As presented.
Amended.
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 Call the roll.
Call the roll, he said.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
We should pass five, eyes one and state.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, and the village manager's report, we would have item nine that was previously on the consent agenda and ordinance approving the levy and assessment of taxes for period commencing May one, twenty twenty-one, and ending April thirty of twenty twenty-two for the village and county special service area number twelve, ten through threes.
Now, what, is that twenty-one dash fifty-four still, or is that all, is that all that's up? Okay, so I will entertain, or I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash fifty-four, and ordinance approving the levy for taxes on SSA number twelve. Second. Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly. Eyes one and state, motion passed.
Now, Josh, could you just briefly review the November building report, which you have in your packets?
Sure, so as in your packets, you can see there is a, a, a debt supplement and a couple of charts from there. Let's go through it very quickly. I put in the metrics for the month of November next to the average so far in twenty twenty-one. All the metrics look good. We've had an additional sixteen home permits that have been applied for. Plan review time is still well under the, the contract. Plan review time is still well under the contract obligation of five days for re-plans at two point six this month, or was last one. The building season is going down, so there's, there's less activity. And just one special note I put in there is that the Midwest Company's recycling facility is, the construction for that is going to be postponed until next year. They just couldn't get the materials and everything in time to get it done this fall. But there are renting space both in Hampshire and in Huntley to continue some of their operations. Any questions?
We also have, before you, the streets department report. Just tell us what you'd like to hear.
So there's, you got three parts. If any, if anybody's been over to the Public Works, you should go over and see it now. It's a big difference. They've got the big concrete blocks, they've got the gravel, and in between the block, I mean, it's, it looks great. One of the key things is, one of the young kids Dave has working for him built a wash rack. For years and years, we've had problems with our, our plow trucks. You can't get the salt off from underneath them. This kid just did that a pipe and drilled holes and stuff, and it blasted clean. It's pretty cool. The kid, the kid's just saving the village thousands on rust problems, so. That's, that's all I got.
We did take some heat, we did take some heat over the salt dieification over the weekend. Yeah, it was, it was pretty interesting. We had a couple of comments from people that were unhappy that we went out and salted because of the winter storm warning.
No, it was a, a winter freeze rain event happening.
Yeah. I don't, I'm just gonna go on record and say I don't disagree with this decision. You know, maybe knowing what we know now, maybe we shouldn't have sent them, but, you know, how do you know?
Right.
How do you know this stuff? So he may have preempted the gun, or jumped the gun a little bit, but you know what? I'd rather have people safe than sliding around over sidewalks and all that other stuff.
He didn't, he didn't jump the gun.
So what I'm saying, I'm giving the, I'm giving the, like, I'm not saying that he did. I said, but maybe he gave the appearance and jumped in the gun, but I'd rather have that than not, is what I'm saying. So it was, it was pretty interesting when people wanted to send the streets we put out, clean up salt on the roads, and you gotta use the water to clean the streets at my threes. So anyhow. As the world turns.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we could ask for a motion to approve the December 2nd, 2021 accounts payable to personnel.
Sorry, I still have a question on Public Works. Do we, are we still pursuing any Public Works building, or?
Yes, we are. In fact, I have a meeting next week with a potential contractor to see if material costs have come down enough that we could possibly, possibly start our negotiations again.
Cool. All right. I just wondered, did we ever talk about it a while?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a couple meetings.
So we have the accounts payable to people this time, the amount of three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Does anyone have any questions about the accounts payable to employees and or across these? It's just to employees this time. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the disbursement of three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents to be paid on or before twelve, two, twenty-one. I apologize.
Yeah, let's.
All right, who has first? Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion to pass six zero.
Next one is for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Do we have any questions about the accounts payable?
Yes.
Fantastic. What page?
Page four. Breathalyzer. Just need an explanation because I'm new and I don't.
It's, it's the gas that is required to operate the breathalyzer at the police department. It's helium. It's a little canister. Congratulations to you that you don't know what that's about.
I know, it just seemed like a good question.
I think they're in the script, the system. It's not something my first.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one then, for, on page two then, for the embassy construction, and that's for the village hall rehab? That, is that for everything that went on outside? The bills just here?
Construction, that was the front, the painting from the building.
Okay, so it's just the front?
The windows and a new door.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Done with prevailing wage.
Okay.
And I think it looks great.
It does. No, I just want to make sure that was from the previous.
The birds are kind of mad, but I think it looks great.
They'll find a tree.
I will entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents on, to be paid on or before the eighth of December. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Holder.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass six zero.
Village Board Committee reports, business stability commission.
BDC will not be meeting in the month of December. The chairman emailed the committee another time that we will not have a December meeting, and we will reconvene after the new year.
Any other, any other BDC type stuff?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Hedges, anything else?
Okay, BR.
We will have our next meeting on Tuesday, the seventh of December.
Fourth of January.
Yes.
What time?
Seven? Six thirty?
Six thirty. Fantastic. Public Works?
They built the tree stand for the tree. Did they cut the tree down today?
Yes, it's in the garage.
Okay.
In water.
Yeah, real nice.
Cool. How's it going up?
Whenever you want it up. Friday.
Who's the decorator expert?
Friday, not Friday is, the plan is next Friday unless you want it up before then.
Okay, well, maybe we should look at the weather and figure out if Friday's gonna be a nice day or not.
Maybe we should look at the weather, or check with Dave, because who's gonna decorate it?
We.
Public Works?
No, you have a committee for that.
Yes.
Dave bought the lights and.
Oh, Dave bought lights too?
So, yeah, someone's decorating.
Okay.
I didn't know. We won't light it up Friday unless you tell us otherwise.
Okay. Cool. I was concerned about that because we have lights upstairs, and I was thinking that. I didn't know if we'd have enough, so I'm glad you went with it. Okay, so is that, Public Works?
That's it.
Good.
Prefer for winner.
All right, budget.
No report.
No report. New business, early announcements?
That's a good question before we move on though further. We've just talked about all these numbers and everything else, and I just wanted to know where kind of it fits in with on the budgetary bill, we've got the additional ten dollars each month that's for infrastructure. Is that all included then?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty, per month?
Yes. Oh.
Ten and ten, so it's twenty-three each one. Does that all kind of go in towards all the infrastructure and all the things that we're doing, or is that, where does that go? That's like one of the number one questions everyone asks. Where do those things?
Two very specific capital fees.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it stays in the Udon, in the enterprise funds, in the water and sewer department, so.
Two different. One water and one sewer.
Yes, yeah. I mean, for audit purposes, they're all combined together, so you'll see, you know, a single water sewer fund. But yes, we, we keep them in that fund. One year we did transfer out, if you recall, to the, to the general fund for capital purposes, but it's really designed to stay in the water and sewer funds.
And it deals with the pipes and, I mean.
Absolutely, yeah. We do everything from, so capital improvements can include, like replacing pumps and those types of things. So yes, it's all capital related.
But it also, doesn't it also partly go to the bond to pay for the upgrade of the treatment facility?
So.
That's when it got instituted, was to help.
No, it actually was instituted when the village received a, a, a bond to do some infrastructure improvements along State Street. We did some sanitary, and I think it was sanitary and stormwater changes here on State Street. It was done right before I got here, so like 2009, 2010 timeframe.
Wouldn't it be downtown?
Yes, in the downtown area, and that's when it was created, was to pay for that.
Pay for that.
And that bond has been paid in full, so that one's gone. So it's now going directly to the capital improvement. I mean, certainly it could be used to pay off IPA loans and those types of things, but yeah.
Because it was just, it was a question that came to me a couple times when I'm walking.
Some people ask if it's ever gonna go away, and honestly, there are so many. Part of the twenty-five million dollar gap is, I don't know, like twelve million dollars in water main replacements. So we're going to be continuing to use that in the water and sewer.
I want to get a feel for that. Take a look at the capital. Capital, the climate on, on the village website includes.
Page goals.
It puts all the, it's all the water and sewer equipment, as well as the infrastructure. So when you say infrastructure, that's just underground, but salt's all the equipment.
It's all.
The tanks, sorry.
I will tell you.
Water and sewer, there's nothing, none of that capital goes to the streets.
It was a pretty contentious thing because it used to be just ten dollars. Years ago, I don't remember how many years ago they were one together, but on my time on the board, we raised it from ten to twenty. And it was, I, I remember this vividly. It was on the date when we were approving the budget for the, for the next year. And the village board actually voted in town based on the fact that we raised it from ten dollars to twenty dollars. It was pretty contentious. And until EEI came in to explain the condition of our water system and some of the capital needs within the water system, and explained in detail what that fund went to, or what that, those dollars went to, and why we needed the increase of ten to twenty. But that was, that was, I know Lori was here. I don't remember Toby.
Yeah, I was there.
It was pretty, it was pretty contentious because I actually, it was one of the only times I ever voted. I, I made the mode, I made the motion and then voted against it. And Jeff was ready to kill me. Well, but it was very contentious, but yeah, that's, you know, I think that, I think that if you want to learn more about it, if you can't get the information off the website, maybe we did, you know.
No, that's, that's fine. I mean, I'll do it. Just because we were talking about all the money, where everything is going, and where some of the areas were flooding, which was before my time, that was kind of the issue, is we pay all this money towards it, and my street is flooding, and, you know, all this water coming in, and why it's not being.
Just, just keep in mind, because there's a subtle difference in stormwater and streets are not included in those capitals. Just the water.
The water coming in.
Just the utilities.
Okay.
Water and sewer.
Thank you for the clarification. I apologize. Oh, yeah.
Any other announcements, new business?
I just have a question. Mr. Hedges, I don't know that we're gonna have an answer, but I did receive in the inbox from EEI, their little mailer where they talked about one of the villages doing the lead pipe removals and repairs. And then I remember receiving a, a communication from our Congresswoman about the possibility of the new infrastructure bill, helping get cover some of that. Do you have any sense of when we may be able to know what avenues of financing or grants we need to start applying for to help offset some of that? Or has there been any discussion, maybe through the municipal organizations or?
Everybody's trying to get information, but there really isn't any information out there yet. Until Congress finishes their job and listens to know what they asked, then that goes to the state. So yeah, we're getting information from Metro, Metro West, the Illinois Municipal League. Lori's getting things from the finance director. Actually, we're getting so much stuff, we read it all because we don't want to miss anything. But nobody really knows yet.
Okay.
Including, including our states, our US senators, and our Congressmen. We've, they've all been great communicating what they know, but they don't. But we're starting to see some pieces come together. We do know that a large portion of the water and sewer infrastructure improvements are going to go to IAPA, and will come out as loans, not grants, which is very disappointing. They, they, they will probably have a loan forgiveness component, but that will probably be based on the, as typical, which may exclude us. So from what we're seeing so far, my disappointment is that it didn't work like our. By the way, just a side note, as late as it is, we received what, eleven hundred dollars?
Four hundred and ninety-three, four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Four hundred and ninety-three dollars of reallocated ARPA funds because, because I think about fifteen communities in the state chose, chose not to take their money. I think the largest one's about forty thousand dollars, either declined or didn't know about it. So they reallocated, but the point is, it took, it took me about twenty minutes to go into the website that DCL created, the portal, and we got our funds in, what, about thirty days? Like sixty days after Congress passed the report. But now it appears that this last infrastructure bill is going to be applied at all.
And I only bring up.
I would suspect that there won't be a shovel in the ground anywhere in this country until twenty-three.
And I, and I only ask, I bring it up because of the question about the twenty dollar and the infrastructure, that that may be something we need to plan longer term for, that, that fees like that could help offset just in case it's a loan, or it's not, like, there's no state funding even though it's a, a mandate.
What I'm struggling with the most right now is that it could be the communities that don't do anything. We're spending money right now. We just authorized the, the last meeting to spend money to, because the state is mandating that we identify our lead pipes and repair them. Now, money's not gonna be coming from the feds that fast. So some communities who ignore that, might even violate state statute, may benefit because they haven't done anything with the grants. On the other hand, it's exactly extreme the opposite direction. Some of these grants are now, you'd be more competitive for this grant if you had your engineering, if your shovel ready. So what do we, you do nothing and maybe get nothing? Or do the engineering, and then you don't get it, you spend a lot of money, and then you don't get the grant because you had too much money in your, in your village. But at least you have done the engineering work, so you're ready to do it yourself. Frankly, that's the direction that I'm leaning toward. That's why I brought you several engineering contracts this year, so that we can be shovel ready.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't questioning that. I was just saying, if that cost plus the repair does fall solely on the village, then that twenty-dollar infrastructure could go towards that, but that becomes even more important, right? Because, because of the need to be able to cover the cost of, we've got a significant part of town that are older homes where there may be more lead pipes, and they need to be fixed, and so having that is gonna be important.
Yeah, it's, it's, and there's a lot of money out there, and unfortunately, I think everybody in the world, and all of us are thinking, hey, it's coming our way. One point seven, six trillion, I think it was, one point seven trillion? And there's no way to know.
Yeah.
It's, it's really, it's getting, it's very frustrating because we get all these emails, you get a lot of them too, from all the organizations. Everybody's just guessing.
Okay. Anything else?
Sure.
Okay, so Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday, we're doing the big holiday battle. If you guys would, there's several of us that are involved. There's several of us that want to watch. The biggest question I have is, Jay sent out an email to this board, now staff, there wasn't a lot of takers, and who wants to be in the parade? I thought I'd ask one more time. Not obligating anybody, we just need to know what direction we go with the call.
I want to be in the parade.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
I did respond, but.
And I did.
Okay.
Late, but I did.
Sorry. All right. So I've got, so.
Laura on the phone.
Laura, you, so me, my.
In the sleeper.
Oh, yeah. Hey, are we gonna ride the sleeper? We could probably make that happen.
Right.
Okay. So, all right, so we already have, we have, we have our answer then, so we're gonna have to do something. We'll get it figured out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We'll figure it out. Okay, all right, that's all I, oh, really? Most importantly, I've got this thing on my face that I've had for a while, and, and not the mask, but Mr. Hedges and I have kind of been doing this beard thing, and he's been rubbing my nose in the fact that this has been coming in pretty nice. So I, I, we need to pull down our masks and we can do it like at a distance, and we need to know who pulled it off. I already know the answer, so I might as well just concede.
It's Mr. Kelly and me, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. So, but Mr. Hedges is pretty proud of his. I am not so proud of mine.
How's yours, Heather?
I was coming along with it.
Aaron, Aaron by far grows the best beard.
Oh, yeah. So now, so but why, why did you grow the beard?
This was a challenge that the mayor.
Well, well, it was initiated by the police.
To raise funds.
That's right. No, 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 go ahead.
I got locked into this. It was his idea, so he's the judge.
So it's for the, the police department, the fire department grew the no-shave November beards and mustaches and that kind of stuff, and so we did along with them. And.
So it's to raise funds for prostate health.
I don't think the chief.
That's why November.
No, the chief, he's the chief.
I'm a, I'm a clean heck, yeah.
Keeps the uniform frappant.
Thank you. So I, okay, Mr. Hedges, are you ready for this?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. All right, let's see. You can laugh now.
And I did trim mine. I had a barber trim mine today, Mr. Kelly's barber, so I've decided I'm gonna keep mine till Christmas.
I think it looks sharp.
I agree. That's the Santa, look at Santa making. Actually, Mr. Schuster said that earlier, so I'm not gonna.
Go anywhere, do the high second.
You have to trim your mane.
All right, so do I just, so I need your help. Do I just concede?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so there's no executive. All right, so there's no executive session. There's nothing. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Ms. Palestine.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Would you pass six zero?
All right, now we got to get this picture ready. You got to.